Good morning and welcome to the June 25th Mesa City Council Study Session. We are excusing Councilmembers Glover, Richens, and Thompson, who are all out of town. We do have some guests with us this morning. Councilmember Cavanaugh, can you recognize our guest for us, please?
Thank you, Mayor. We have exchange students from our Sister Cities Program, from our Sister Cities of Guanajuato, Mexico, Bernabeu, Canada, and we have their Mesa host students as well. And they wouldn't mind standing up so we can welcome them to our meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and welcome to Mesa. Someone left the heat on, so I'm sorry, but it's usually not this hot. So come back another time.
It's usually hotter.
As far as you know, it's usually not this hot. But thank you, we're excited that you're here. The first item on our agenda is to review the items on the agenda for the formal July 1st council meeting. So let's take a look at that. Agenda items three are liquor license applications. Agenda item four are contracts. For a couple of pages of contracts. Agenda item five are the introduction of resolutions. Yes, Mr. Luna.
Yes, I had a question on 5A. Maybe Heather could talk to us about that. Sounds like a great program. That was something we can be real proud of.
Good morning, Mayor. Councilmember Luna, I'm Heather Wolf, Library Director. And what you see before you is an IGA for the Genesis Center. You probably remember that we actually had a grand opening for the Genesis Center in November. Normally, the IGA expires on June 30th. Normally, we'd be doing a First Amendment, but they wanted to do a completely new IGA because the federal law that governs their funding changed. It was the Workforce Investment Act of 1998, and in 2014, it became the Workforce Opportunity and Investment Act. So they had to change the wording of the IGA. So it's really minor wording changes, but it gives us a chance to talk about the program. As I said, they opened in November, and I know they report their monthly statistics to me, and they're very pleased because every month they're adding more students to the program. For those at home who aren't familiar with the program, it's an opportunity for students who are disadvantaged in age groups 14 through 24 to overcome barriers to finishing school so they can go to the Genesis Center and they can help them find ways to finish school and complete their education so that they can get good employment in the future. And yesterday, I happened to attend a tour of the Mesa Council College facility, and Amy Tretheway talked to us about that program. And I think these students will be just a natural flow into that program. So I'm very excited about the opportunity to refer these students to her program.
Thank you, Heather. I was going to ask you about the --
Okay.
To tie in with Mesa Council College, it's an excellent bridge from your program to the Mesa Council College program.
Yeah.
Something that we're quite proud of here in Mesa.
And they're opening on August 5th, so they'll have a big celebration for that. So I hope everyone can attend. It'll be a great facility.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Good to see us do -- I was at the grand opening of the Center as well, and it's nice to see us partnering with the county on good projects like this. Mr. Cavanaugh.
And just a follow-up question for Heather, so don't run away.
Heather, I'm sorry, you're not off the hook quite yet. I apologize.
Lightning is striking twice. I just wanted to get an idea of the numbers of students that you've seen in the monthly reports, kind of the average numbers.
It started small. It started with just a handful of students. We're now moving up into the 40s and 50s per month. It seems small, but the Genesis Center folks tell us that those are good numbers, and those are new students that they're seeing, so.
Now, do students come just self-referred, or are they referred by others, or a mix?
A little mix. They do have to meet certain economic and other social guidelines. So they have to be people who are facing barriers either economically, or they're single parents, that sort of thing. But, so they're being referred by other agencies, the schools, and then some are finding the Genesis Center by word of mouth. Plus, we do send people that we help in the library down there as well.
And other than use of space, there's no other fiscal impact to the city?
Correct. Yes, it's a great partnership in that sense, yes.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Luna.
I was going to ask you about 5B.
Yes, sir.
So I was going to ask the city manager if he can talk to me about 5B.
Councilor, can I have Matt come up and maybe give us a little background on this item?
Good morning, Mayor, Councilmembers. This cooperative agreement, this intergovernmental agreement between San Juan County, which is just northwest of Santa Fe and Albuquerque, I'm not sure if you're familiar with, City of Farmington, it's the county seat there. They requested the City of Mesa to enter into an intergovernmental agreement to be able to utilize one of the contracts we have for helicopter engine parts and repairs. It's with the Arotime America, which is a City of Mesa business located in Falcon Field. And as part of their -- apologize. As part of their policies, they require a cooperative purchasing agreement within the city, so we're helping with that, bringing this to council for approval.
So basically, what they're doing is they're using, they're purchasing power to buy something here in Mesa. We get the tax dollars and
Correct.
They get what they need.
Absolutely.
Okay, excellent. That's a great arrangement. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions on resolutions? Agenda item five. Six is then adopting resolutions. Seven, introducing ordinances. And eight, public comment. And then eight and nine are some subdivision plots. Okay, council, any other questions on -- so we're good with leaving these items on consent for Monday? Okay, thank you. Next item on our agenda is to hear a presentation, discuss, and provide direction on the updated parks bond allocation. Mr. Hirschberg, welcome.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Thank you. Mark Hirschberg, Director, Parks, Recreation, and Commercial Facilities. As you recall, in 2012, voters approved a $70 million Parks and Recreation Bond Program for the city for us to take care of some of our existing parks, as well as add some new parks into the system. The first authorization came in spring of 2013, when we first started projects. At this point, we're about halfway there. $35 million spent roughly, or encumbered at this point in the projects we've done to date. We still have several more to go, but through those, as you're aware, we've had a couple of projects that have changed. One of those being the acquisition of the Buckhorn Bass property. As you're aware, we continue to go through repeated negotiations with the property owners and couldn't reach agreement on that. So there's a savings of those dollars that were allocated within the bond program, as well as we continue to work with the Kleinman Park community and that neighborhood, what we had designed and proposed for that location, they expressed an interest and desire in having something less than what we had proposed. So we're still planning on spending some dollars there, about $1.3 million to modify the park, make some improvements there, put shade over the playground, take care of the tennis courts, replace some fencing and some lights, and clean up the park, and provide some TLC that would have happened throughout the rest of the program. But again, this modified project will meet the community's needs. So with the reduction in service of that project, as well as Buckhorn Bass, there's some dollars that we'd like to reallocate to some of the projects that were already approved through the bond program that still keep us within the $70 million that were authorized by the voters. But again, complete the rest of these projects as we proposed throughout the bond program and help us get there. We've seen construction dollars continue to rise from those early estimates that we did in late 2011, 2012. As the economy continues to improve, those construction costs continue to rise. So some of those estimates and the contingency that we've put on those projects early on, we're seeing there's still not quite enough there. So again, we'd like to reallocate an additional $100,000 to Fiesta Sports Park, which is the Powell Junior High site. And that'll allow for a playground that we had originally been proposed. We've been trying to keep moving that along, but this will ensure that we get that in there. Greenfield Park, we'd like to add an additional $1 million to that project to allow us to complete that project as design. That's the urban fishing lake, new playground, and a restroom to service the increased attendance that'll utilize the fishing area. The Rio Salado Path, transportation has been doing a great job in getting a number of grants to continue to enhance and extend that trail project, but we need an additional $600,000 to as match to make those grants a reality and utilize those, and that'll extend the path from Alma School to Tempe. Pioneer Park, we'd like to add $1 million to that project. If you recall, early on, once the community asked us to shift the new Mesa Aquatics Complex, that was originally slated to be just a replacement on the site of the old Taylor Pool. And the community asked us to relocate it to Mesa High. And as we did that, there were some additional costs that needed to be included, so the Pioneer project, we moved money from that project to accomplish the Mesa Aquatics Complex. So $1 million back to Pioneer Park to help us kind of get back to meeting the expectations of the community for that project. Riverview Baseball Complex, we'd like to provide lighting on the four baseball fields at Riverview that aren't there now. This will allow us to increase the city's opportunity to program those during, especially during these summer months. We have a lot of travel tournaments, high school and college programs that would utilize those fields, just not at 2:00 in the afternoon. So this will allow us to, some increased programming in the evening hours to fully utilize those fields and also a great sports tourism driver and helps us fill hotels with out-of-town guests that are utilizing those fields. The federal building conversion, this was for the development of museum space and exhibits. The project has, as it's evolved, has identified a need for an additional $2.74 million to complete the project as they desire. And then, again, continuing to focus on the existing park improvements with an additional $310,000. And this just really is designed to help us continue to update our playgrounds, meet ADA requirements as those have changed over the years, and continue to keep those safe. From our last conversation during the budget cycle, the council asked us to look at the project schedules of when things would, we're, design would starting and construction starting. We've made some of those adjustments. Most notably, you can see that Greenfield Park has shifted in front of Pioneer Park so that we can begin design sooner on that and start construction sooner than planned, hopefully. And then Pioneer, what that does, also moving Pioneer back a little bit, will allow us the opportunity to, if there's savings from other projects, continue to put funding towards Pioneer Park, which, as I mentioned, we moved significant dollars out of that to accomplish the Mesa Aquatics Complex. Again, just want to point out that the revised construction start, as we've discussed in the past, really bringing those projects online is contingent on the economy continuing to improve and us being able to bring on the required operations and maintenance through the budget process.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just quickly.
Mr. Brady.
Mark, could you just clarify? You mentioned about the fact that we reprogrammed some dollars out of Pioneer to go help Mesa High Pool come about. Where are we with the original budget? Was it about $6 million?
Correct, yes. The original budget was $6 million. We moved $3 million out of that. With the request today, we would move that budget from $3 million to $4 million for a total budget of $4 million.
So we're trying to get back, so we're about, we're originally at 6, now with this proposal, we'll be about 4.
4.
Okay.
Can I ask a question on that? Does that mean we would do less than the originally programmed improvements at Pioneer? Because we've only got a budget of 4 instead of 6? Or does that mean we're going to hold on and try to find another 2 along the way and deliver the project that we were hoping for?
Right, Mayor. That's our hope, is by shifting Pioneer back further in the schedule, that if we can identify savings in some of these other projects, we'll just hang on to those savings and keep putting it towards Pioneer when we get there and hopefully get back closer to that 6 million. Otherwise, we'll have to do some significant value engineering to make some improvements, but within that, the dollars that are available.
Questions? Mr. Fenter.
Speaking of value engineering, talking about the, let me make sure I've got the federal building conversion. Originally, how much did we have set aside for that project?
That project had an original budget of $3 million in the bond program.
And I see we're talking now about 5.7. So what happened to escalate that cost so high? And I remember talk of value engineering somewhere in that process.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Beth to come up on that. I've been focused mostly on the park side, and Beth's been, and her staff have been going, working with the museum part of it, so.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Well, several things have changed. The original $3 million was just a basic redo of the interior of the building. Since that time, after evaluation with the museum staff, they wanted to change the exterior as well, which added quite a bit to the project. And then it also, the current scope and schedule and budget include doing the exhibits inside the museum as well. Those were not included in the prior budget. The prior budget was a very basic redo of the interior of the building.
Mr. Luna.
Where do we anticipate getting the additional funding to complete that project?
Mayor, Councilor, that's what's presented today is the, because we're not doing Buckhorn, we're just recommending giving the council kind of a list of how we could reallocate those dollars. So some, these dollars that we're talking about now for, whether it's Pioneer or even the federal building, could be coming from that source. So we're just trying to help Mark get the dollars in the budget so he can move forward with projects. So we're essentially taking all of the funds, removing all the funds that we had originally allocated for Buckhorn and trying to redistribute those among these other projects.
Yes, Mr. Cavanaugh.
And just by way of background, on the 2012 bond issue, a key part of that bond issue was historic preservation projects, which the Buckhorn was part of, as well as the federal building. So if you're looking at broad categories, you're keeping it within the same categories that the voters had authorized us to spend money on. Hence, I think that's the reasoning behind city staff allocating it to the federal program.
Mr. Hirschberg, brag about the Parks and Rec Department for a little bit. You guys are nominated again for a gold medal award. Tell us about that.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. We just received notice that we are again recognized as a finalist by the National Recreation and Park Association and the American Academy for Parks and Recreation Administration as a one of four gold medalists in populations 401,001 and above, Class 1 is how they identify that. Our competition this year is Kansas City, Missouri, Parks and Recreation, Cleveland, Ohio, and, oh, Maryland National Capitol Park Planning Commission. Thank you. Who was also a finalist with us last year as well. So this is our second consecutive year as being recognized as one of the top four. So we'll find out in September at the National Recreation and Park Association's annual conference if we're there, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
As we talk about this topic, I think it's good just to remind ourselves that this is a real point of pride in our community and that you and your staff are doing a fabulous job and we're being considered one of the best parks programs in the country. So thank you for the good work you're doing. Mr. Cavanaugh.
It's appropriate that we have people from Sister Cities here. One of our Sister Cities, Bernabeu, is really well-known for its parks facilities, particularly its interior facilities. And I know, Mark, you've talked about at some point in the future, about your desire to perhaps have an exchange program with Bernabeu. What would you see that as being, again, down the road, given your staff's experience here and their staff's experience up there?
Yeah, let's arrange that for July, June, too. The, yeah, we'll go there that time of year. Mayor, Vice Mayor, you hit it right on the head. Bernabeu does an incredible job with indoor facilities and recreation space, and obviously a lot of that is climate-driven. But as we've talked about in the past, one of the things we severely lack in our program offering is indoor space and the ability to offer, whether it's indoor fitness equipment or space large enough to provide workout facilities or just simple classroom space to provide programming opportunities, that's a shortage for us. And we rely heavily on the schools, and as their usage continues to evolve and increase, it's harder for us to utilize those facilities. Councilmember Luna can speak to the success of the Red Mountain Center and what that, the impact that has and the difference that makes in a community in terms of health and activist, social engagement. And it's, those that use it, it's really a community hub. And there's a market out there for private fitness clubs, and there's a group of, there's a market for those that enjoy the public recreation setting. You know, I came from Colorado where the climate was similar to the Bernabeu climate, so indoor recreation was also an important piece there, from the gymnasiums to the running tracks to fitness equipment. And as we, you know, this time of the year, that's the type of space that you really need to continue to build a healthy and livable community.
And Mayor and Council, Mark and his staff have done an absolutely incredible job with developing a whole variety of outside parks and recreation. And this is something that I hope that you would look favorably on in the future if a request is able to come in. I think it would be great to have an exchange staff program with Bernabeu, where each city can take advantage of the strengths of the others. And this is, it's one of the great ways that cities can utilize a Sister City program to benefit both communities.
Thank you, Mr. Luna.
Could you speak to us about that last picture you have on your slideshow? I wonder where that might be?
Yeah. This is the playground, you know, we speak of partnerships, and it should point out on these bond programs, we're trying to capitalize as many dollars as we can throughout this program, whether it's through matching grants or donations or in-kind services. And this is one of those locations. Desert Arroyo Park, which is in the final stages of construction, will do the grand opening of that in August, as soon as we can align calendars with everybody. This is at McKellips and Ellsworth, right next to Zaharis Elementary School. It's been a great project. We've involved children from the school throughout the entire project, early on, from design to equipment selection, to the type of signs that we'll have out there and the various educational nodes, as well as the teachers, so that we can really create this, this social gathering place and this learning environment, and helping build the next generation of conservationists and learning about the environment and the role that humans and the environment play in interacting with one another and the importance of protecting that. So it's been a great project, but this was a playground that we worked with, the manufacturer actually have donated. They had a new piece of equipment that they were trying to showcase and get into a catalog. Their manufacturing plant is in Minnesota, and the equipment was ready to be installed in December, so they obviously had a hard time doing that in Minnesota and needed a warm-weather climate so that they could get it installed and have pictures ready to go for their catalog release in January. So we were able to work with them and get this playground completely donated, shipped, installed, everything donated by the manufacturer. And this will be at the main gathering node of Desert Arroyo Park. But you can see, we talk about upgrading the play spaces that the Vice Mayor mentioned and playgrounds, and trying to be creative in those play spaces. And we see that throughout the playgrounds that we've tried to install and get kids to think creatively about how they play and how they interact with the equipment, and trying to make them blend in more with the environment. So you can see the rock colors even on the rock wall, try to, of that structure, try to mimic the same rock colors of Usary Park in the back. The slides, we've asked, we've worked with the manufacturer to change the colors to make them more desert green as opposed to evergreen green. So it's been very responsive, and again, these are the kids that, from the school, that we invited out to participate in that shoot as well. So it's been a great project, and we look forward to having that one wrapped up and opened up for the public's use.
Great, thank you. Okay, we've talked nice about parks for a while. I think now it's time to get down to the dirty work. Alex.
I was just going to ask you, what would be helpful is, we know we have this $70 million that the voters approved, to be able to look at it visually and say, okay, we spent this much for this project, and kind of break it down and look, and then the proposed projects. What happens, and you know, everybody, I shouldn't say everybody, I seem to feel parochial sometimes about, hey, why is the project in District 2, you know, being shoved years down the road versus another project happening, you know, right away? And I know the city manager and others try to balance how we do that. With the pressures that I think that have been described to me with O&M having a big impact on budget, the escalating cost of constructing these projects, there's a pressure, there's challenges in this very capped $70 million to be able, because as a reminder to folks, when we went out, we went out to the entire community, to each district, we received input from those citizens of what projects they wanted to achieve. And then it's their understanding that we're going to, you know, do those projects. That's why they've overwhelmingly voted for it, and we had citywide support for it. So making sure that we still meet that commitment and that expectation of the citizens is a goal for me, and trying to balance that out. So I'm a little worried, I don't want to step on anybody else's project, but if we've had some additional requests, and I'll speak specifically for the museum, and I'm a big supporter of Mesa Historical Group and making sure that we have the history covered, but does that negatively impact these other projects that the citizens, you know, how do we balance that out without getting sidewards with each other as a council? That's kind of my concern.
So Mayor, Councilor Fenter, would you like us to come back and kind of show you, as Mark mentioned at the beginning, we've committed, we've either spent or committed about half of that? Would you like to see all those projects from, in the $70 million, kind of reconcile all that? Would that be helpful?
Yeah, it would be helpful to see what we've done.
Okay.
Here's the 70, what we're proposing to do. We see those timelines, but we only see it in chunks.
Okay.
We don't see a grand picture.
Okay, no, we can do that. You know, today, we were trying to focus on the increment with Buckhorn, but we can bring the whole picture of what's been completed or obligated, and then taking these numbers or at least a proposal idea of what we're proposing for the remaining projects. And most of these projects, we're getting close to the point where, by reallocating these dollars, we got pretty close to getting most of them in a position that we could start construction. I think Pioneer Park is the one that we need to, we're still, as we mentioned, we're trying to accumulate. But let's just come back, we can turn around quick, pretty quickly, and come back with the, kind of the overall picture, and then show that allocation to the council. Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, and you know, to make an argument, I think I can make a pretty good argument for any of these projects. When you look at Pioneer Park, end of the light rail right now, some of the things that are happening down in that area probably ought to be, you know, not postponed too far, the council member isn't here that covers that area. But I think a pretty good argument could be made to, you know, we probably need to take care of that place. And I don't know, it's just an, that achieves what you said you were going to do, but I think we'd probably have to have that uncomfortable discussion about who gets what priorities or if there's an additional need that's identified. Is that really where we want to put it for other projects?
Let me weigh in just a bit. I love all these projects. I agree with the allocation of the funds from Buckhorn. Unfortunately, I think that the historic relevance of that was somewhat dissipated by the family members, and so I agree with not funding that and shifting those resources to these other great projects. There's nothing on this list that I want to unfund. But I do have to say that on this list, my top priority would be Pioneer Park. I think the best thing that this city has done in the last several years is Riverview Park. I keep saying this, but every time I drive by Riverview Park at any time of the day or night, there's kids playing on a playground. night, there's kids playing on a playground. I think I had forgotten what a big deal and what, how valuable and important to a community a playground is with playground equipment. And the splash pads is the greatest invention, you know, since Sly Sprit. And Mesa, Arizona ought to be the capital of splash pads, I think. I mean, we're just perfect for that. So the idea to me, so Pioneer Park, you know, it is going to be a huge success. When it happens, we're literally going to have hundreds of kids crawling all over Pioneer Park again and it's going to be fabulous. And the fact that it's right at the end of our light rail and in such a prominent location in our community, it's just, it sets us up for another home run like we see at Riverview. So to me, that moves to the top of the line rather than being the project that ought to wait for other money to fall out of other projects. But I get it. And I'm a former member of the Mesa Historic Society. I'm passionate about historical preservation. I see Ron Peters, he changed my life, that's 10 years, 15 years ago, when I had sat through a presentation about the destruction of historic buildings in Mesa. I get that and that's a priority for me as well. But I would love to find a way, the model that we're adopting for the Mesa Historic Society, the Mesa Historic Museum is a little out of the ordinary for us. We are big time in the museum business and we need to double down on that. And I'm anxious for the federal building to become a place again instead of a boarded up building. So, and that too is right in the heart of our downtown and it's an asset that is sitting, deteriorating instead of adding to our, the community. So I want to see that happen, but I'm also anxious to get a better feel for exactly how that's going to happen, that because it's not going to be a city operated facility, it's going to be operated by a great organization. We're spending a ton of money on that building. I don't think it's money that's being poorly spent, but I'm anxious to get a better feel for to what extent can we, what more can we expect from the Mesa Historic Museum in terms of fundraising and programming and community support? We need to know how that's going to work. And I have a rough idea, but I'm anxious to see that fleshed out just a little bit more, so I have a greater level of comfort with that. So I'm, my suggestion would be that we go forward, but I would like, like Mr. Fenter perhaps, to get another report back from staff saying, with a little more detail, as to where the 70 million went. I know it's gone, but what can we do to ensure a high level of comfort with going forward with the Historic Museum? And what, if anything, can we do to prioritize Pioneer Park just a little bit? Because to me, every day that we don't do anything at Pioneer Park is just a lost opportunity. Yes?
When we looked at this issue several years ago, really two project in conjunction with Light Rail, the two of the projects on the list here that really impact Light Rail the most or Light Rail impacts the most were Pioneer Park and the federal building. And our original directive or hope from the council was that the federal building improvements and construction would be done by the opening of Light Rail in downtown. But I do understand the reasons for the stopping construction and delaying it, but it's, we have the nucleus of a great arts district and arts museum district downtown and having the federal building complete with, for the programming that we've been told about, I think would be, again, a great asset to downtown. So I don't want to lose sight of that. I was part of the group that acquired this building now, what, almost two decades ago? To 13 years ago, 14 years ago, to, for this very use. And so it's, the community's waited a very long time for it. But Pioneer Park though, also is going to be the beginning of the line or the end of the line for Light Rail with huge numbers of people using it. And I agree, if there's ways to at least nudge it up in the queue, that's helpful, take advantage of the population that we're going to get, so. But I also would be interested in looking at the whole picture in terms of all the different great projects that you've been working on, what we spent and not spent. And I think all of us in council realize that with the passage of time, and as Ms. Hune reminds us all the time, the construction costs have increased from when we first, when the voters passed the issue. So I think we're all understanding of that, but I think looking at the current status report would help us a lot.
Thank you. So just to be a little more specific, I think, and what I would like to see, I'm voting yes in favor of going forward. I think staff, I endorse what staff has done, I endorse the numbers that have been used here. But I would like to, I think we do need to flesh out more, what are the details going to be of the long-term relationship that is going to be necessary with the Mesa Historic Museum for operating this building? It's a significant investment on the part of the city. We could use, you know, $5 million and a lot of great places. I'm not proposing that it not be spent on the federal building, but I just want to know, have a greater level of comfort going forward as to what we can do to make sure that's going to be a successful project. And then, again, I'd love to see staff and council just keep scratching our heads here for a little bit over the next few months so that we can expedite Pioneer Park as much as possible. Mr. Fenter.
I agree with what you said. The only thing I would ask, and I've asked this over in public safety and everywhere else with regard to value engineering, really, how do we test everything that's asked for? Because it seems like sometimes there's some big asks and then reality needs to set in and we need to do, I love that term, value engineering. That's a kind way of getting people back into reality, but if we can do something along those lines, I know that when we talked about Greenfield Park, they led with value engineering, which kind of threw me a little bit. So, you know, if we're going to value engineer Greenfield, we probably ought to value engineer everybody else and find a nice peaceful medium place to, where everybody has some success is the only thing I would add.
Great. So this, there's no action required, we're just hearing a presentation to discuss, provide direction on updated parks bond allocation. I think it's the consensus that we understand where we're at mathematically on our $70 million. We endorse the numbers that have come to us from staff, but I'll make a personal request. I need to see more details on how we're going to ensure that the Historic Society Museum downtown is going to be successful. And then if we could just constantly remind ourselves over the next few months, where can we find some money to send over to Pioneer Park? Because that's, to me, again, that's just a guaranteed hit and love to see it happen sooner than later.
Okay.
But congratulations again, Mr. Hirschberg. You and your department are big sources of pride in our community. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next item on the agenda is to hear information regarding job order contracting projects. Council, any questions? Next item is to acknowledge receipt of minutes of boards and committees. It's been moved in a second. And all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, passes unanimously. Hear reports on meetings and our conferences attended. Mr. Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mayor. I just came back from Salt Lake City for the American Public Transportation Association Rail Conference. And I have to tell you that at a number of the seminars there, Central Mesa Extension was featured as, in reporting nationwide in terms of projects. And people were very impressed that it's seven months out of schedule and on or under budget and the, in terms of the, the impact that it, that's had or it will have on a downtown area. And so there were, we had a lot of very positive feedback on that. It was a very interesting conference. Valley Metro Rail was very well represented. They have a rail rodeo and I guess our mechanics and engineers participated in that the very first time and did well. Arizona will be hosting this rail conference next June. And they did a nice video that was touting using the rail for attendees to come to Mesa, Tempe and Phoenix. And so I'm sure they'll be asking all of us to help welcome. It was a conference of 1,200 folks that are, will be coming next year to Arizona. Thank you.
Thank you. I was at a national conference this past week as well. I attended the U.S. Conference of Mayors Conference in San Francisco. The focus of that was on technology and innovation and how we can do more with less, given that we're all challenged, as our earlier discussion demonstrated. San Francisco is a fascinating place that a few years ago, downtown San Francisco was not a nice place to be. There was a lot of decaying buildings and they have done a great job of inviting business downtown along light rail corridors and transit corridors. Cable car, I guess, would be the better word for San Francisco rather than light rail. So we were able to go on tours of some national headquarters for Twitter and Uber and a lot of great national technology buildings or companies that have relocated into this downtown corridor that in my mind is not very different from downtown Mesa. So it was, it was very informative to see, hopefully, the future of what a downtown can be when you focus that type of attention on it. Also had the opportunity to meet with a lot of folks from the federal government on issues that are relevant to making progress in Mesa, so I thought that was time well spent as well. Mr. Brady, schedule of meetings and general information.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just to remind the council, our next council meeting is July 1st and it's a Wednesday. So it'll be a Wednesday afternoon. And then the following Wednesday, July 8th, will be our second meeting and the final meeting for, before the summer break. So we'll have two meetings coming pretty quickly here, the 1st and 8th of July. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there's nothing else, entertain a motion for adjournment. Move in a second. And all in favor, please say aye. Thank you, we are adjourned.